Call the board, please stand. Ray, Heavenly Father, thank you again for this opportunity to meet about our business. Be with us and guide us in all of our decisions for our communities, the betterment of our people. In your name we pray. Amen. Stand standing, we pledge allegiance to our flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Gentlemen, you have the agenda before you. Are there any corrections and additions, deletions?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't see a citizen's comment.
Okay, let's see. Yes, it was. Okay, we'll need to add the citizen's comment, which will be after the consent agenda. If that's permissible, we can add it in. Thank you, Mr. Weave. We're recognizing that. Anything else? Donna, I have a motion that we add citizen's comments after consent agenda. Rest of the agenda will stand. Motion, I have a second.
Second.
For the favor eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Okay, addition will be added. We'll start tonight for presentations from the Johnston County Visitor Bureau. Ms. Donna, she is our executive director and have the information inserted in our packet. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting me come by and talk to you once a year. I'll give you a presentation on what we do for the town of Smithfield. In your packet, we have before you what our current budget is for this year, which is $145,000. You're on track to exceed budget, probably top $10,000. You'll probably finish up the year around $160,000 in occupancy taxes. To explain how it's broken down, the town keeps a 3% administrative fee for collecting the tax. And the Johnston County Visitor Bureau collects, takes 15% for managing all your expenses and doing all the direct marketing and design work, which this year's budget for Smithfield's around $123,000. We also break down for you how that money is spent between billboards, printing projects, advertising, and then other capital grants that we give to projects around the town. There is a reserve for the town of Smithfield currently at $34,000 that is earmarked for projects for the town of Smithfield. Any questions on how we operate about the town of Smithfield?
It's one good thing when we see better than this way. Otherwise, it's not a good thing when we see better. This is a good thing when we're ready. One question.
Donna. Yes.
Do you have, or do you know what form of advertising is the most effective or gives you the most bang for your buck? Do you have any way to track that or keep track of it?
What we do when we have print advertising is we, our staff always ask, "How did you hear of us?" We do a manual collection of responses. So we know when we advertise in our state magazine, AAA, how many responses we get back from those ads, and we track it that way. We definitely are drive-by market with billboards being number one reason. People are going to pull off and decide to stay, go out to shopping, stay in our hotels. Billboards are very effective.
The last several months, there's been a lot of conversation about economic development. What is some of our strategies or economic plans through tourism that we've been looking at or you've been looking at that you might consider?
For economic development?
Yes.
For marketing?
For marketing.
Okay. As far as marketing strategies?
Yes.
We divide our marketing strategies based on market. So we have leisure market, group tour market, meetings market, and sports market. What we do is we divide our strategies based on those particular areas, whether we do direct sales, trade shows, advertising. We break those down by market. We're pretty much a leisure market driving through I-95, and that's what we spend most of our dollars on.
So by identifying that, it gives us a better target to...
Break it down based on...
...advertise in that scheme.
What brings in the most visitors is their stay and out of shopping.
Any questions, Donna?
How is the money allocated? I know this is a Smithfield budget, but how is it allocated from various, between the various things?
Well, down at the bottom, I gave a little breakdown for you on how Johnston County allocates the $600,000, which is the 3% tax. Is that what you're asking me? We break it down, Human Resources runs about 50% of the budget, Operations at $91,000. Then we do special event grants and capital grant programs that runs $40,000 of our budget, and then $214,000 of it is direct marketing. So that kind of shows you where the 3% is. Each individual...
Is this marketing budget comes out of that?
Now, your marketing budget is on top of that. Your money is spent exclusively for Smithfield. None of your dollars go to allocate towards the app.
I guess my question is, how do you determine what is allocated for Smithfield?
You mean who sets the budget for Smithfield?
What percent?
What percent? You've got $600,000 annually, and 123,250 allocated to Smithfield, at least in the marketing budget.
100% of that goes to, those are your dollars.
$600,000, 2%.
The 2% runs $123,000. 100% of that is spent, none of that is spent on any other projects. All of your 2% money is spent on your projects.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. Okay, our second presentation is the Johnson County Southern Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you tonight. My name is Richard Chilby. I'm the president of the Smithfield Southern Chamber of Commerce. And I'm passing around a copy of our membership directory and a marketing postcard that we're now using about some of the events going on at the chamber. I did include, I think in your package, a copy of our program of work for the year. I didn't want to start off by saying that the chamber's mission is really to serve as a unified voice for our members, our business community. And we have approximately 540 members. Most of them are probably located in Smithfield, many of them located in some other communities in Johnston County, even a few that are outside of Johnston. So what we, our program of work is based on what we can do to help our members prosper, help our communities prosper as well. We're divided into five divisions: education, economic development, marketing, public policy and advocacy, and then member services. And I kind of reviewed much of the economic development program last week. I do just want to emphasize that's very important to the chamber, to our community, to our businesses. Our businesses have real vested interests in the success of our communities, their livelihoods depend on it. So everything we do revolves around trying to make sure our businesses prosper and return their employees do well also. Just a few highlights in some of the areas in education. We've had an education committee now for well over 20 years, and some of those goals include promoting education opportunities in the area. And we've done that through being involved with some of the programs that have received some attention this year, certainly the IV program, Triple S, National Packard is probably... We've been a big supporter of that and feel like it's going to be a great asset for this community and for the school. And it's a great program, and those who've been here know that it provides a great opportunity for students. We've also promoted students that are excelling in a variety of ways. One of our members' son is going to Governor's School, had a National merit scholarship finalist in the area. The Triple S band continues to be successful. These are the types of things that we like to promote, as well as certainly the charter school. We like to recognize quality teachers. Teachers are important to this area. We had a Teacher of the Month program for many years. We just recently had an academic achievement for high school students, high schools that are members of the chamber, and those are the working high schools. And then supporting our other education. In the marketing, we, marketing is one of our new divisions, and this back card, I told this card I just gave you, is one of the items that has come out of that this year. We also do a lot of promotion of our members online through our website and through mobile site. We have a now a mobile website, Facebook page that gets anywhere from 100 to 1,000 views every time we post something. And I looked up our website statistics, and I don't know that these are anything extravagant, but just, I think it just shows you the power of the internet. Last year, we had 92,000 searches of our membership directory. We had over 52,000 searches of advanced members. We had 26,000 searches or looks at unusually sectioned. So these are, we had about 300,000 individuals. That's, those are pretty staggering numbers, but it just shows you that, I don't know that that's anything that's even great, but it shows you the power of the internet, and we're trying to tap into other ways we can promote the chamber. Advocacy is something that we do want to do. We want to promote our members and inform our members about issues, and we continue to be involved with the I-95 issue. While we know that needs supporting, we want to make sure that whatever they do does not affect in any way the business community that's living lives on that interstate highway. So we're certainly keeping an eye from that. We also are very interested in our hospital, in what it means for our community and the importance it plays not only for healthcare, but also in economic development. They have over 1,000 different objects at Johnston Health, and so we want to make sure to be, to provide a great service. And then, of course, member services, that's the bread and butter for us. We are a membership organization. People elect to be a member of the chamber, and we want to make sure that they value in their membership. Most people join the chamber to be, to get exposure, to, to network and make contacts. So we do a lot of things to try to give our members the opportunity to do just that. We offer seminars on a variety of topics, including networking, marketing, social media. We do use the suns on, just had recently. We have a Chamber of Women's Business Network, which is a professional organization that promotes women in business, and they give away scholarships. Just a month or so ago, they gave away $25,000 in aid for, to help another business person further their education. It's for a person, for someone who's in business or who's working and wants to further their education. Our expo, our golden swing are all important to us. We had, we had corn ribbon cutting recently, and had 40 new beds born last year. And one of the, and some other celebrations, and one I'll just mention that the mayor attended last week, and that was 325th anniversary of Phil in Business, and they have been in Smithfield, I believe, for 78, 79 years. Chris had some pictures of the old buildings that were downtown Smithfield. They're one of, I truly value their, their membership tremendously and their business there. It represents, it would be awesome if that company did. Does anybody have any questions? I gave you a membership directory. We're getting ready to start a new one of those, but that's the current one. And we use that to, I want to promote our members more, but that is done. Let's go by one of our...
Any questions, Mr. Chilby? Thank you, Richard. Okay. Thank you. Our next presentation is Downtown Development Corporation Executive Director, Chris Johnson.
Gentlemen, I'll be brief due to the fact that my presentation is similar to the one last week, but a couple of things that I forgot to highlight, but I did include what we're going to be doing this year, provided that our budget is, we have a budget, once it's voted on. But one thing that we're going to be working on is the updating the strategic economic development proposal or plan, and there's a proposal in here that our organization will contract with Stanford Holshauser. I know that economic development has been a discussion point with this, with this organization. And one thing that, in my opinion, in our organization's opinion, is that obviously you've got to have a plan about what you want to do, where you want to go. And hopefully, this will update the existing plan that was done about five or six years ago, and, and the amount is listed in here, but I'll be also looking for opportunities, funding opportunities through Electric Cities to try to offset some of those costs, to maximize our dollar. But there'll be opportunities within the proposal to talk about focus groups and interviews and things like that to get the community involvement, as well as the business involvement of what we want to do, where we want to see our direction go as a community. Other things that, that our budget is for, what we're working on is, and I showed you this last week, but we do have these back today, as well as the flyers for our certified sites that have just recently been updated. Also, one of the last things down on my talking points that I've got, that I've inserted into your folder that I'm proud of is this TriangleSoutheast.org. We want to start marketing ourselves and positioning ourselves in association with the triangle. We already have that website. It's not up and running, but it's under development. We reserve the name and try to play off the triangle and the benefits of being located east of the triangle. And also, all of our marketing materials, when I go out and recruit, is talk about the other side of the triangle, whether it's the military side of the triangle, the port side of the triangle, the transportation side of the triangle. I think it's to our benefit to market ourselves as a part of our neighborhood of the triangle. As Paul can allude to, or, you know, when we went to the Research Triangle Park Regional Breakfast, Johnston County will be growing over the next 20 years about 50%, and so hopefully that we will position ourselves as a community to receive that growth. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. One thing that in talking about tourism that the Visitors Bureau did and that we, that I'm continuing to use is the Commercial Attraction Report that the Visitors Bureau did a couple of years ago. You know, it'd be ideal maybe that we could update that. Obviously, there's a desperate need to have a civic center, meeting space, large meeting space. We're missing out on a ton of business of being able to recruit and get large groups of people here. And so that's something that I think we need to make sure that we stay on the forefront, that we continue to look for ways of looking for a large convention center or meeting space. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you very much.
And that concludes our presentations. We'll move into the public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight is RZ 1302 Mountside Church of Deliverance, applicant seeking to rezonate approximately 4.71 acres of land in B3 business zoning district, and R28 residential agriculture zoning district. Property considered for rezoning is located on the west side of the intersection of Brogdon Road and Old Dupree Road, and further identified as Johnston County Tax ID Number 1509902. Before I recognize Planning Director, Mr. Enmore, do I have a motion to go into a public hearing?
Motion to go into a public hearing.
Second. Motion is second. I expect your eye. Eye. Opposed? We are open to public hearing. Mr. Enmore, I recognize you at this point.
Mr. Mayor, you might, when I asked if anyone wants to provide testimony tonight, yes, they'd be swayed.
Okay. If you would like to present evidence in this public hearing tonight, either or, please rise and face the clerk at this time. You will raise your right hand.
Please, while I'm in the process of telling the jury about the truth, settle your breath.
Okay. Now, Mr. Enmore, I will recognize you.
First off, a little bit of housekeeping. You'll notice that your agenda packet is somewhat orderly different in respect, you have a table of contents for each public hearing item, and you have the listing of what's in that as far as exhibits. You have a staff report, finding of fact and approval criteria, planning board minutes, reporting property owners and certifications, and rezoning permit application. So each here, each hearing we have, the order of material will be the same there. First off, if you'll allow me to orient you to where the property is. This is Brogdon Road intersection, and this piece of property right here that's in red is a piece of property under consideration. This is a large of the property, Brogdon Road, Old Dupree Road, and the site is basically available in trade government, about 4.7 acres of land. The, the property under consideration does not presently appear to have any environmentally sensitive areas located on the property. As is said, it's 4.79 acres currently as a B3. The request is to rezonate the property to R28 residential agriculture. Zoning to the north, there's a couple corrections I'd like to make here. The zoning to the north, which is toward Old Dupree Road, is R28 and B3. It is also light industrial on the east side of Old Dupree Road. This is the certified industrial site that the council approved about two years ago. To the south, it is R28. To the east, it's R20A. And to the west, it is R28 and B3. Our comprehensive land use plan designates the Brogdon Road as a commercial node, and is been part of that task force that put the comprehensive plan together. We had commercial nodes, two of them were the interstate interchanges. We had some others that we had here in Buffalo and Girwood Seaters, and we had some at different locations around town. The intent of those nodes would be intensive commercial development at the intersection would basically be three commercial, and as the further you got away from the intersection, it would transition to open eye, office and institutional use, and then eventually go into residential. So you had the high intensity, high use closest to the intersection, and the further you got away from the intersection, the lighter the use and more residential effect. Also, to be reminded that the council rezoned the 120-some acres right here with the hill land, the hill farm, and that is certainly a certified industrial site listed with the North Carolina Department of Commerce. Staff analysis and commentary, the property considered for rezoning is currently vacant wood land. Rezoning the property to R28 residential would allow all permitted uses within the R28 zoning district to be considered for future approval, either by right of use or conditional use permit. The consistency with the streets, this consistency with the strategic growth plan, the proposed R28 residential zoning district and uses permitted in that district can be considered somewhat consistent with the strategic growth plan, which recommends that the area be considered for office and institutional and high-density residential developments further away from the intersection. I will add at this point that it is currently zone B3, and down zoning is something that is not rarely seen, usually up zoned to get more beneficial use out of the property. This is kind of the reverse of that. Consistency with the Unified Development Code, any approved development at this location will be in compliance with the Town of Smithfield Unified Development Code, and the compatibility with surrounding land uses. The property considered for rezoning is located on a minor corridor entering the city from the south, and is close proximity to other light zoning districts. Rezoning the property to R28 would be in general compliance with the other properties further away from the intersection. Fire protection will be by the Town of Smithfield. Should be no impact on schools with rezoning. Assessment parks and recreation, there's no impact created on that. Approximately 200 feet of road frontage along Brogdon Road will need to be approved, where the access for water and sewer will be provided. They would be a Town of Smithfield customer, although they would be on the county water and sewer system out there. And the findings are, in connection with this legislative decision on a rezoning request, the town council may consider certain approval criteria. Please refer to the approval criteria, which is the finding of fact, and I'll explain that to you in a minute. The planning board is May 2nd meeting unanimous, will vote to recommend approval, the request to rezonate the 4.7 acre tract of land from B3 to R28. The town council has now requested to review the petition and make a decision on a request to rezonate 4.7 acre tract of land from B3 to R28. That, that will be the end of my presentation. I stand open for questions, and as you approach the finding of fact, I will make sure that the way that's formatted this time, because it is different than what you've seen in the past.
Any questions on Mr. Enmore's presentation? Okay. We need to hear from those who are presenting. Anybody wish to present evidence on the hearing in this matter? Feel free to come forward.
But Pastor, this, that's, I know this is here, what does the church...
Anyone with a petition like to be heard on the matter, feel free to come forward if you'd like.
Yeah, I do have...
If you'll come up and be sworn by the clerk, and I hate to ask you to do that, but I'm going to do that.
I can't explain all this stuff.
You're used to being in front of a crowd.
Oh, yeah.
He will be affirmed by the clerk. Just whatever presentation you would like to do about the application to this, to that area.
Well, I, we have been in this, with this project for a little over, about a year, and with all that we have discussed and with the land and everything, with the people that are just working with me, I have a contractor, and to me, everything looks, you know, well for us to go and build a church there. It would add to the community, and there's so many things that the Lord has impressed from my heart to do in the community as a whole, not just that we just want to build a new edifice.
I should have given you better instructions. Just to the zoning, do you have anything you'd like to offer to the zoning? We'll get into the other part.
Okay, well, I need my... Okay, well, I need my... Okay, he's here too. Talk about that.
Well, we've talked about the proposed site plan later, I think rezoning stands for sale, and the board of council later presented.
All right, that's all I needed. Thank you. I didn't realize you were representing.
Yes.
Okay.
You through with it?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I should have asked permission before, Angela. Sorry for my lack of instruction. Okay, Mr. Mayor, we'll move back to you. At this point, we need to do a little bit of... We need to close the public hearing. Anything else we should be presenting?
I have a question. Mr. Emmer, what effect, if any, does this have on the certified site property?
Direct effect on the site, it probably have little. The effect will be, is what happens if the industrial site takes off, and all of a sudden we fill up 120 acre park, and the development around that interchange, which I've been in Smithfield 30 years, has not grown, but the plan for it is to grow eventually. It now has water and sewer out there because of the county. I think the area will grow as future demands press us in the area, so that's what the council needs to take into consideration, is what's there now, but also what could be there in the future. So I think it does, it has a lot of potential for a lot of development in that because of the land around the interchange on Exit 95 is very quickly being gobbled up, particularly on the side of the Smithfield crossings project already is, there is very little land in there. It's probably 75% developed, and on the east side of 95, at Exit 95, there's been a slow growth on that side, but here again, I think when the interchange is replaced, which is going to be part, of course, of improving Interstate 95 as it comes up, those things are going to appear differently than they do now.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Do you have to clarify a point? Mr. Emmer, did you say that it was or was not compatible with the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan? And I thought you said that it was commercial node at that intersection.
The node at the intersection, around the immediate area of the intersection, is commercial in the comprehensive plan, which is what it's currently saying. To downzone, it would be not in compliance with that. The concept of those nodes was to have a belt of high-intensity commercial development around the node and the ramp, and then you transition to an office and institutional environment, and then eventually on out into residential environment. It's stepping down in zoning intensity as you move away from the intersection. The question is, is how close this is really pretty much on top of the intersection, and as far as a piece of commercial land is involved in it.
Yeah, man, for the record, I'm just trying to understand it. It sounds like it's not compatible with the future land use plan or complex.
If you take the comprehensive plan literally, the commercial, it is, needs to remain commercial and not go to another zoning district.
Do you know the stomach of the parks and the parks and the county on the same side of 95, where it is?
We have. There's commercial. This is where the Boykin Auto Leadership is over here, but this whole corner is the same commercial. This is industrial here immediately across, there's some existing residential uses in there, so they have said residential, and this track right there is a redundant of this track, so that's why it still's at our front end.
How about the other side of the intersection? Looks like it's B3 over there, other side of 95.
Right there, yes, that's B3. And there's B3 immediately adjacent here, this is a boat house and property, it's been 30 years plus, but you can see the intent, Frank Lee has actually come in here and asked for rezoning on that a long time before, industrial, and the town council, he never brought it forward because there was a lot of concern about downzoning from industrial, I mean zoning from B3 down to industrial.
How did this property become to be zoned B3? Was that something the property owner asked for, or was that part of Smithfield's comprehensive plan?
I can't answer how and when it got rezoned. It's been an extended period of time. It was carried forth from the zoning map that it was in existence at the time the UDO was established, and it was reaffirmed at the UDO. What the council did in that area of town, there were a number of industrial tracts zoned out there. There was probably six or eight industrial tracts that were all on the Brogdon Road corridor, and the council cleaned those up because they didn't have water and sewer to them, and some of them weren't big enough to be valid industrial sites, but the commercial remained at the intersection.
Any other questions?
Are churches permitted for conditional use in B3?
No, they're not allowed at all.
And are they allowed in any of the...
No, not in any of the commercial districts.
So they're only allowed agricultural, residential?
They're allowed in all other districts by conditional use, except for industrial.
All other than business?
Other than business and in industrial.
Most of them probably in business right now?
I'd say most of them are in office and institutional. Either office and institutional or residential.
No other questions? I have a motion to close our public hearing. If we have no other questions, we can close the public hearing. I'd be glad to have a motion for that. What is the question? Motion is second to close the public hearing. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into our findings of fact.
Okay, on page 20, you have the starting of the finding of fact. There are a total of eight findings that the council must do, and for each of those, you have what the topic of the finding is, which is in bold italics, and immediately below that, you have the applicant's response that appeared on their application packet, and then you have an option to either agree or disagree with the statement as it is. And for each agree and for each disagree, there are things there to consider as you go through the deliberations of the council on the findings, and that's consistent with all eight findings. When you get to item nine in the finding of facts, that will be a motion to either approve or a motion to nine, and then item 10 is an actual recording of the decision based with discussions that are involved during the course of the deliberations. And what we're doing now, this entire document is recorded in the courthouse as part of the finding of fact and the conditional use of the rezoning petition.
We can go through each one of these items?
Mayor, you can't go through each one, or you can go through for two or three that seem more pertinent than the other ones, you know, for ones that there seem to be...
I can't hear you.
I said you can go through them individually if you so choose, or if you want to pick two or three that you think there might be more need for discussion, talk about those, and then eventually make a motion that if there's a consensus that there's agreement on a handful of them, you can make an agreement that it does meet the criteria or does not, as the case may be, for a whole group of them. I think that motion is made to pass, and that will be fine. You'll see in the packet, Mayor, that there's an agree or disagree based on the facts, inappropriate facts here for each of them. If there is a general agreement for all of them, you know, it should specify that it's in compliance with the requirements. If there's a specific one or two that there might be some disagreement about, then you should probably talk about those specifically, those items, and see what the consensus of the, of the council is on those, on those things.
I think, in my opinion, if they're looking at the evidence and agree, I'm familiar with the area out there, it's not in a certified site, it's across the road from the certified site, and that place was, I think, Mr. Sanders was intending to build a funeral home out there, or he didn't give a funeral home on that property, because they had to have a forest main, and he, he paid for that main, he had to pay for the main, and still do it. But the property is sitting in an area where it's been at the corner all of a while, it's not an industrial, or industrial, and it's in the right spot for it to. So I recommend we just go ahead and make this decision, pass it.
Okay. Being in compliance, we have to agree or disagree with the finding of fact as a group or an entity, so if we want to go through it, then we can do that, or if we have a consensus, whichever we want to do. I got it, right?
All right. I guess we need to go the individual.
Go through each one then. Finding one of eight, the zoning petition is in compliance with all the applicable plans and policies of the Towne Smithfield. You see the applicant's response, the future land use plan has identified this property as being suitable for commercial and institutional uses. The current B3 zoning does allow for commercial use, but not for institutional uses such as a church. We agree to rezone the request generally in compliance with the future land use plan and the policies of the Towne Smithfield, or we would disagree, the rezoning request is not in compliance with the plans and policies of the town, because the intent of the future land use plan is to allow for the creation of areas best suited for high-intensity commercial and institutional uses near the I-95 and broader roads change. Those are your two choices. Do we agree or disagree with that trial?
I agree that we need to go ahead and, all right, because this property's been out there for years and years. I mean, it's been under probably the same family, it's right now, that property don't have anything to do with it. But these people have found a nice place to build a church, and now we sit here talking about future growth. Well, if a church is not future growth, what is future growth? I mean, what is the church going to have to do with industry if it comes out with it? What would that have to do with, you know? If already purchased the land, and we set it, and they're trying to get it, but they purchased the land with good intent.
Your suggestion is to agree with the rezoning request?
Yeah, rezoning.
Okay.
Agree, ma'am.
Okay, I agree. Maybe we can just short circuit this. I move that we adopt each finding of eight facts as agreed. Second. Okay. Motion and a second for the finding of fact to agree. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Post. Glad we started short here. So, we've got to make a decision. So we go to the item nine. Once all findings have been decided, one of the two following motions must be made, motion to approve based on the compliance, or motion to deny based on the failure to add a readdress, all of the above.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning.
Second. Motion is second to approve the rezoning. All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Post. Based on the motion to, majority to approve the rezoning petition, we will approve for the following reasons, that it meets, should I have a motion that basically meets the aforementioned findings of fact? If we can just... Second. Motion is second that it meets the aforementioned facts and the approval of the motion as been granted. Okay. Anything else?
I've got something to say about it. Let's step here. You know, that's the first church in the area, came when Dr. Mark Luther King drive, papered out, bed, also trash, so that church took it on itself to build up. You see a plaque where the state makes it there two miles, and we get that plaque out there to say that that was their area, they volunteered, that church volunteered it for the town. And I haven't seen since they started, it's been some years ago, I've not seen a statement about how bad it was coming around that Dr. Mark Luther King down on Cross Street. I mean, it's been a, it's been a place where the church has really served, served the union, and now they're sitting there, leaving a silverware here, but you know, committed to it.
Thank you, and good luck to you. God bless you. Okay, we'll move to the next public hearing. Second public hearing is Mount Sinai Church of Deliverance. The applicant seeking the conditional use permit to construct a church on approximately 4.71 acres of land located within the R28 residential zone. The property considered for rezoning is located on the west side of the intersection of Brogdon Road, Old Dupree Road, further identified as listed tax ID number. Okay, we have a motion to open this public hearing. Second. Motion is second, those who favor aye?
Aye.
Post.
Okay, if it's okay with the mayor and the council, I'll proceed on into the staff analysis and commentary, seeing how we already have orientation on the property. Before we start, I know the exhibit that's in your packet is hard to read, it is also hard to read on this property, but they're proposing an entrance drive in the middle of the property, and it splits on the left and right into parking with the actual church facility here, so they're basically building the church fairly close to the road. They show a future expansion on each side of the church, and the site plan will, this is just a preliminary site plan to show the general intent of the development that will probably change as it goes into it. As far as consistency with the strategic growth plan, the proposed church is permitted use in the R28 district if the conditional use permit is allowed, and can be considered consistent with the strategic growth plan, which recommends the area to be considered for office and institutional, and that's the band around the commercial node that I was talking about. Consistency with the Uniform Development Code, any approved development plan for a church at this location will be in compliance with the Towne Smithfield Unified Development Ordinance and compatibility with surrounding land uses. The property considered for conditional use permit for a church is located in a minor corridor entering the city from the south, and is in close proximity to other light zoning districts and residential uses. Approval of the church at this location should not create any incompatibilities with existing land uses in the area. Again, fire protection by the Towne Smithfield should have not any effect on schools or parks or recreation. The access would be from Brogdon Road, which is the DOT road. Water and sewer provider will be the Towne Smithfield, as they'll be our customers, even though they'll be on the county's lines. The findings in connection with the legislative decision on zoning, on this request, excuse my name, the town council may consider certain approval criteria, those are listed in the finding of fact, and although those would give the town to get through that, it's a little bit different than in the past. The planning board, it is May 2nd meeting, unanimous, we voted to recommend approval of conditional use permit for a church or property located in the R28, the residential agricultural zoning district. The town council was requesting to review the decision, make a decision based on the finding of fact for conditional use permit.
Generally, in this, this particular hearing, you can hear from the applicant... Generally, in this particular hearing, you can hear from the applicant, but I think we're pretty well established, we know what the applicant is seeking, uh, but I would like, would you like to be heard, please, come forward?
My name is Dan Simmons, I'm a trying of civil works here in Smithfield. I'm working with the church to develop a site plan. Uh, as you look at that site plan, there's probably one change that DOT is going to hit us with, and that's probably lining up that driveway with Old Dupree Road, so we don't have a conflict of movement whenever we go for a driveway permit. The church is set back fairly well off the road, allow adequate parking between the building and the highway, and to adequately park that property, and also to give us a little room for expansion on the building. This 4.71 acres is really suitable for this type of use. You put the church where it's at, and then you've got the property in the rear that can be used for many youth activities, it could also be used for senior activities and gathering back at the back of that property, and it would be a very nice location for a church to meet the needs of that community. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about the site plan. I don't know, I didn't prepare it. Prepare your agenda.
It's pretty well obliterated. It is page seventy-five. Any questions for Mr. Simmons? Thank you, Dan. Okay. Any more questions before we close this public hearing? I'll obtain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Second. Motion is second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving to the, any other offerings, Mr. Infield, before we find the fact? Well, as far as the finding of fact are going there, there's several staff recommendations of things for the council to consider there. One is under finding of fact, one of four, uh, the, what Dan Simmons just mentioned, approval of NCDOT. Uh, we've already had some preliminary discussions there, although require it to line up with Old Dupree Road. Um, and then you can go through here again, it's just like, um, previously, you have findings in favor or findings, uh, and, uh, denial for each of those areas. I would consider it, uh, the council to consider every one that is listed for approval. If you do decide to approve, that you strongly consider all those that are listed there so to make sure that the site development of the church property is intact. And so, and these are all straight out of a uniform development code, these are not anything that we can't ask of anybody else. That being said, we have a draw motion that we approve these findings of fact. So moved. Second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Being said, we go to our, we have a finding of fact. Okay, number six, Senator, uh, directed, uh, report a decision based on what we have just approved, and we have an overall motion that we, majority of both, that we approve this project as conditional permit instead. Second. Motion is second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. We'll move to our next public hearing, which is, uh, item number three, RZ thirteen dash oh-three, Smithfield Commerce Center. The applicant is seeking to rezone a fifteen point three acre portion of one hundred twenty-eight point eight acre tract of land, uh, heavy industrial zoning district to B3 business zoning district. Property considered for zoning, or rezoning is located on the northwest side of Industrial Park Drive, approximately eight hundred feet northeast of the intersection of the Components Drive, further identified as Johnston County Tax ID one five L one zero zero six one. We have a motion that we open this public hearing. So moved. Second. Motion is second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing, gentleman presentation. I might ask if there's anyone, again, Mr. Mayor, that would provide testimony to be sworn in. Does anyone like to be heard in this public hearing, please, Dan?
He's already been sworn in.
Okay, all right. We are all sworn. Okay, to reference you to where the property is, this is, um, the outlet center, uh, this is the, uh, where Brown Coran is here, this is what used to be the old Savannah site right here, and we're talking about a portion of the site in the approximate location where the old ball field used to be. Port, portion of the site, the Channelmaster side, but it's basically the old softball field property. Yes, and that approximate location. The property considered for rezoning is located in the northwest side of the Industrial Park Drive, approximately eight hundred feet northeast of the intersection of the Components Drive. The applicant is seeking to rezonate fifteen point three acres to, uh, to, uh, from HI Heavy Industrial to B3. The, uh, there does not appear to be any environmentally sensitive areas on the property considered for rezoning that, uh, at this present time, uh, at least in the area that's this, the larger tract of the industrial site, most have some environmental considerations, but they're not on this part of the property. The zoning to the north is, um, heavy industrial and V3. Uh, the existing use is vacant. To the south, it is R-20A, existing use is I-95 and agricultural on the east side of I-95. Uh, to the east, the zoning is heavy industrial, the Smithfield Business Center is what is there. Uh, zoning to the west is heavy industrial and V3, and, uh, that's basically the outlet center shops and, uh, there's smaller, uh, industries out in the front of the drive. The property considered for rezoning is currently in, uh, own and undeveloped portion of the Townmaster factory site. Rezoning for the property to B3 would allow for all permitted uses within the B3 zoning district to be considered for future approval, including retail strips as well as rest of some places. Consistency with the strategic growth plan, the, the proposed B3 zoning district and uses permitted in that district are consistent with the strategic growth plan for that area. We do show it transitioning from industrial. Consistency with the Unified Development Code, the rezoning, the property from heavy industrial to B3 will allow for greater numbers of permitted land uses. All future site plans will conform with the county's ability of, or, unify the development ordinance. Compatibility with the surrounding uses, the property consistent, is consistent for rezoning, considered for rezoning is located on the existing commercial park, and the proposed rezoning should not create any incompatibilities. Fire protection is by the town of Smithfield, should have little or no effect on schools, um, parks, uh, recreation will have not any effect, except that there will be recreational funds received from the recording of, uh, anything that would be developed on that property as a subdivision. Access to streets would be, um, the Industrial Park Drive to East Market Street, and the water and sewer provider would be the town of Smithfield, as well as the light foot provider would be, uh, town of Smithfield. In connection with the legislative decision on a rezoning request, the town council will consider certain approval criteria, and please refer to those, and they're in the finding of fact. The planning board at its May second meeting unanimously voted to recommend approval for rezoning a fifteen point three acre portion of the one hundred twenty-eight acre tract of land from heavy industrial to, uh, B3 zoning district. The council has now requested to review the petition and make a decision for rezoning of fifteen point three acre portion of the one hundred twenty-eight acre tract to B3. Uh, the clerk gave each of you, uh, before you came in, there were some late revisions that we, um, made comment on last week as far as staff, and the engineer and surveyor made those corrections, and so the packet, the, the maps that you have on your, on your table are very minor changes. If you did look at them closely, you probably would see that there's... Any questions?
Uh, Smithfield Business Park LLC, are they the owner of the entire tract out there at Channelmaster, or have they acquired this, this, uh, all type of land?
Um, I, that is the, what is listed on the tax records for Johnston County. That is the entire tract. Yes, do you have any other information other than that?
No, the entire tract's on the same offer, including this petition, partially.
So they're just picking this up off that tract?
Yes.
This is a petition, we figure.
I'd just like to say, I'm, I'm part of the team, it's here tonight, and, uh, uh, we feel like petition standing on the top. We're having, we're having a question now.
Any questions on the petition? That was the result. Here you go. Do we have a motion to close this? So moved. Second. Motion is second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Simmons, at this point, we go to the findings of fact, any, the notions before we go on? It's, uh, the, the questions are different, but, uh, and there's not as many, you only have four, um, no, excuse me, you have eight here, I'm sorry, you do have the eight because of this rezoning. They're the same questions, the responses are different to some extent, but here again, you have the opportunity to consider all of them. We have a motion from the floor to consider the volley of approval, and, uh, will be approved, is that, of all of them? Second. Motion is second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Based on the recording of this motion, and, uh, we have a majority of both, the town council, the town, the rezoning petition, RZ thirteen oh-three, is that the motion of this pool? So moved. Second. Motion is second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for talking, please. Project. Item four, CUP thirteen dash oh-three, C A Bird, the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a commercial strip center on a property located within the B3 Business Conditional Use Zoning District. The property considered for approval is located on East Market Street, approximately two hundred eighty feet east of its intersection, Futural Way, further identified as Johnston County ID one five zero seven one zero four six. Do we have a motion that we open this public hearing? So moved. Second. Motion is second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right on the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard in this public hearing, please stand to be affirmed if you have not been affirmed already. By the clerk, if you have been affirmed, we're getting a, you've been affirmed, Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Okay, you're good to go. Okay?
Let me, um, let me tell you the location of the property.
Bird. Excuse me, Mr. Simmons. Mr. Bird, if you'd just have a seat, we'll, we'll call you up in just a second, okay? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Simmons?
This is Brightland Boulevard, this is, um, what Martin Street, this is the railroad, the property in consideration is located right here. This map is the old zoning map, we have an update, but we only do that as we, uh, will have answers available at this time. If you remember about, uh, two months ago, the council rezoned the property, uh, from R6 Residential to B3 Conditional Use District. Uh, Mr. Bird is back now with a conditional use request for this property to allow for a convenience store. Uh, the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow for retail strip center on the property located within a B3 CUD district. The acreage of the site is five acres, and it's currently zoned B3 CUD. Proposed zoning will allow for retail sales and services, primarily a convenience store. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate the center. There does not appear to be any environmentally sensitive areas on the property considered for rezoning to include cluttered plants of resonating weapons. Uh, the zoning on the property to the north is B2 and B3 combination, uh, the existing use is unpermitted business. South is, uh, zoning is R6, which is single family residential. To the east, it is B3, which is existing use of the land, the existing use is vacant land, and to the west, the zoning is R6, which is also a single family residential. The property considered for conditional use permit is nonconforming and has lost its grandfather status due to inactivity of the site. Planning staff is requiring the applicant to correct the zoning map, move, uh, property lines, and bring the site into full compliance with the minimum, uh, development standards as required by the town of Smithfield Uniform Unified Development Ordinance. Consistency with the strategic growth plan, the proposed B3 Conditional Use Zoning District, and uses permitted in that district are consistent with the strategic growth plan for that area. Consistency with the Unified Development Code, the conditional use permit request with the associated site plan brings the site as close as practical to meeting all minimum development standards in the town of Smithfield Uniform Development Ordinance. The compatibility with surrounding land uses, the conditional use permit request with associated site plan is located on the existing commercial park and should not create any incompatibilities. The project will be providing a buffer in the form of landscaping and privacy fence in order to access residential uses. Signs, uh, development identification sign is allowed near the end of the site. Fire protection is provided by the town of Smithfield, uh, water and sewer will be provided by the town. Access for the property will be proposed to be to East Market Street, and, um, findings, uh, again, you will take into consideration the finding of fact which are attached. And the planning board at its May second meeting unanimously voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for retail strip center on property located within the B3 CUD district with the following conditions. One, provide a six-foot privacy fence on the sides and rear of the lines as required by the town of Smithfield Unified Development Ordinance when reduced buffer yards are proposed, with the exception that the fence is lowered to four feet within the first thirty feet closest to East Market Street. What that basically says is that our code requires a thirty-foot buffer strip between commercial property and residential. It's not practical to get it there, so in order to offset that, then you have landscaping, and you have a wooden fence to divide the buffer, and so this is permanent, and the other recommendation was to permanently close Fayetteville Street Drive by replacing curtain gutters and provide privacy fence and landscape materials per the town of Smithfield Unified Development Order. The town council was requesting to review the petition for conditional use permit to operate a retail strip center on property located within the B3 CUD district, zoning district. So that's the end of the formal presentation. Uh, if you have any questions, stand down.
Mr. Embler, on, on the planning board recommendation, it has a six-foot privacy fence, but over in the findings, uh, it says eight feet.
Um, that, that was the rec, as discussions were evolved, uh, with local neighborhood residents in the town council, I mean, not town council, town staff, uh, it was felt that we ought, that council ought to consider going to eight-foot fences in place of six-foot for streaming purposes.
Any questions, Mr. Simmons, for that? Mr. Bird, if you'd like to be heard at this time, you're welcome to come and say whatever you like about your project.
I didn't see what, what he presented to you before. In other words, the, uh, there's a question about the, uh, access to Fayetteville Street. In other words, big trucks can, it's, it's a small area, and, one, they put a, a tree right in the middle of this, it takes up two of the parking spaces. And one, they put a tree right in the middle of it, it takes up two parking spaces. And it's an old building, which is not really the, really comes up to the standards of today with the existing building. But the next thing you're talking about, cutting off the back porch, and try the trailers coming there and I'm like, how you gonna get in and out without that drive foot? And I believe that, and it was designed years ago, we pulled out the bags and backed up around the hood, and also a garbage truck out there. That truck's gonna have trouble, your truck's gonna have trouble. Getting in and out of no, no good. We need that Fayetteville Street up there.
Okay, what you're saying then is you disagree with these findings and would like your consideration and be heard?
Well, it's a safety deal too, because they got to come out on the city highway, they could come around and get in there, and then get back from there and get out, go back home. It's just a safety issue, it's like happening at Walmart when they didn't have the crossover between the buildings. They went out to the resident, they come back and couldn't cross it. But safety is, it's a bargain, it's a buzz. It's always been a walk-in type story, when you get back around the block and you make the line.
Okay. Anything else?
That's fine. A fence, six-foot, eight-foot, it don't matter, three-foot, ten-foot, but when you put that up, wow, delicious, in that park, where it can be seen. In other words, they went over there on the second street, next to, where, Dr. Tree Street, they got a fence there, they didn't know what to do. I just like to be treated about like a resident.
Any questions to Mr. Bird, Mr. President Taylor? Go here, you're taking it, Bird. Thank you.
Let me just pour it into the side just a little bit. This is the actual location of the meeting square, this is Market Street. The plan closes parking across the front of the property, and it also proposes parking down the right-hand side of the property with landscape and stuff. This should be incorporated in your packet, but this is a sign, a sign lamp, served in our campus, in your packet.
Any other questions to be heard, Mr. Emmerich? If you've already been affirmed, okay. Please be affirmed and state your name, clerk, for action, please.
Tony Nixon, eight-seater drive, Smithfield. As we discussed in the planning board meeting, the neighborhood had some certain concerns about the building, Mr. Bird, and some of those reasons were safety. And by that being a residential area directly behind this store, we felt that if that area was closed to vehicle traffic, there would be considerable amount of foot traffic that would be accessing the store, which would, we have some safety concern. Children and also elderly and adults would be trying to access that store along with the tractor trailer and that sort of thing. Also, there's some safety concerns that have always been an ongoing issue there with some of the residents directly behind the store, so they felt like that would be a better issue for them if there wasn't a lot of foot traffic coming in and out of their property to get to the store. As far as the height of the fence, we just wanted to make sure that that fence was aesthetically nice. Wooden fences over time tend to move one way or the other, they tend to weather from, you know, under weather, they tend to sold from the weather. So all of those things will be issues for the community at large, and also should be issues for Smithfield, that being one of the major corridors coming into Smithfield. So I know that there's been some beautification, things done with the chamber in that area. So we want to make sure that that front door presents a nice picture for the town. So as far as the community goes, we don't have an issue with them having the business, but we want to make sure that our neighbors are safe. And the only way to really do that is to close off that property so that there is no traffic, vehicle traffic going from Saturday through Fayetteville Street. And if there's an issue for the tractor trailers, I know that there are certain portable hydraulic lifts that can be placed in the parking lot that can go up and down and unload trucks and move it to wherever you want. So if that's an issue, then that may be something they may look at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Bird.
Around the 70 Highway, and I remember one morning, and that queue bureau got run over in 70 Highway. And when you put the children going to the store in that highway, that's murder, any way you look at it. And that driveway down there never crossed anybody's path.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions to be heard in the public hearing? If we do not have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved. Motion second, those who agree, aye? Post. Okay. At this point, Mr. Emmerich, do you have any notations as to the findings?
The finding of fact are similar to the ones that were for the conditional use permit for the church. There were four findings, and in your packet, you have things to consider for approval and things to consider for denial. So you can consider each individually, or you can consider all of them. Also, at the conclusion, there's recommendations there listed, or if you decide to find in motion to approve, there are certain ones that need to be considered, and if you consider to deny, there are certain ones that you can still include there also.
Okay. Here's that council, we have suggestions on the findings of fact as to approve or deny based on the findings. With these, this is a conditional use permit, so these conditions as listed, findings item five would be, if approved, these would be required under that condition. I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, I can't hear you.
The requirements to the planning board are lined out, you need to go by them. I'll make a move.
Could that motion be considered then, Mr. Williams, to approve items, findings of fact, one through six, or one through five, excuse me?
Yeah.
One through four? I apologize, one through four. Okay, like a motion in the second, all those who agree, aye?
Aye.
Post. That being said, the motion to approve is, we'll consider the findings of fact listed in there, five, do I have a motion that we approve this motion, excuse me, do I have a motion that we approve this conditional use permit based on these requirements? Motion has second, those who agree, aye?
Aye.
Post. Okay. We will approve this conditional use permit based on the findings as listed. Mr. Bird, if you'd like to get with Mr. Emmerich to understand that, if you need more clarity, he will be glad to clear it up for you what that means, okay? That concludes our public hearings. We have a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, do we approve the consent agenda, all those who agree, aye?
Aye.
Post. We have inserted after consent agenda citizens' comments. If there's anyone here that'd like to be heard, now will be the time. Presentation under citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to be heard? Okay, we'll move to business items. The first one would be the Smithfield Commerce Center. The applicant is seeking to approve to subdivide a 15.3 acre portion of 128.8 acre tract of land into seven individual lots that will be located within a B3 business zoning district. Property considered for subdivision approval is located on northwest side of Industrial Park Drive, approximately 800 feet northeast of the intersection with Ponder Drive, further identified as Johnston County ID 15L10061. Check, Mr. Bird, if you have any thoughts on that. Paul?
Got called up from my paper.
The applicant is seeking to approve to subdivide a 15.3 acre portion of the 128 acre tract of land. This is what you rezoned a few minutes ago to B3 into seven individual lots that will be located within a B3 zoning district. The property considered for subdivision approval is located on northwest side of Industrial Park Drive approximately 800 feet northeast of the intersection with Ponder Drive and further identified by the Johnston County tax ID number 15L12061. The property to be subdivided is located off Industrial Park Drive and situated between the newest portion of Carolina Premium Apple Mall and Smithfield Commerce Center. A portion of the site is to be provided, of course, in the Townmaster Baseball Field. The property to the west of the site, considered for subdivision approval, is zoned light industrial and the home of King Compression Molding Incorporated. To the north and northwest is a vacant tract of land, zoned B3 business, and is the side of a previously approved land for multifamily housing complex. The property to be subdivided is currently zoned B3 business and can accommodate all permitted uses within the district, including hotels and restaurants. The property to be considered is a 15.3 acre tract of land, the developer is proposing to divide the land into seven tracts. The smallest is about eight tenths of an acre, and the largest is about 1.2 acres. The average lot size is approximately 1.37 acres. The development is proposed to construct a 950 linear feet portion of Peaton Road extension. Its publicly dedicated roadway will have a width of 70 feet and contain a 37-foot back-to-back curb and gutter driving surface. The access to the east will be provided by an additional 330 linear feet of public roadway. The public dedicated roadway will have a width of 60 feet and contain a 34-foot back-to-back curb and gutter driving surface. Future access to the northeast of the site will be provided by a 60-foot wide strip of land to be reserved by the developer and constructed in later date. Pedestrian access will be provided by a five-foot sidewalk in this proposal on one side of the street. Utilities to include water, sewer, and electric will be provided by the Towne Smithfield. The development will be required to extend an existing water main from the intersection with Ponder Drive and Industrial Park Drive. Sewer will be extended to an existing gravity main located to the east and within the interior of the Smithfield Commerce Center, in other words, it's down by the creek. Electrical service will be buried within the roadway of Peaton Road. Fire hydrants and streetlights will be provided as required. Stormwater detention will be provided downstream aboard the proposed subdivision. The planning board at its May 2 meeting unanimously voted to recommend approval of the Smithfield Commerce Center for preliminary subdivision flat. Action requested by the council is to consider to review the petition, make a decision on the Smithfield Commerce Center preliminary subdivision flat. You will see this two more times, one with the engineering flat, we will bring that to council for courtesy review, and then you'll see it again after the improvements are constructed and they're ready to report the final flat for the subdivision. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Any engineer and the land planner are recognized, surveyor are represented here tonight. If you have questions at that moment.
Any questions, Mr. Emmerich, on the presentation?
Mr. Emmerich, the proposed sidewalk on one side of the road only, can you give a little more background as to why it's only proposed on one side of the development?
Our code actually only requires it on one side for that width of roadway. As the roadway gets bigger, we do require it on both sides. It's not uncommon in commercial developments to have it on both sides.
And the proposed width of the sidewalk, five foot, does that beat?
Yes.
As far as the proposed right away, and the width of the right away, what, as far as staff's recommendation, is that adequate to service seven lots?
It is. The reason why there's two different sizes of roadway, the 70-foot roadway is part of the traffic impact analysis that was performed by Rami Kip back in 2005, where they wanted to propose a future extension of Peaton Road, and they recommended a 70-foot roadway with a 37-foot back-to-back pavement section, which that allows for two movement lanes of traffic and a center turn lane. And the other one, that's a 60-foot roadway, is serving a limited number of businesses, and therefore the traffic carry on that would not be nearly as high as out on the Peaton Road extension, so it doesn't have to be as big a pavement section or as water driveway. And it is consistent with our standard assignment.
Thank you.
So based on what I hear, the planning board has moved to approve this, and based on the conversation I hear you did not, you feel comfortable with this as presented? I make a motion to approve this request.
Motion second. Motion second, those who agree, aye?
Aye.
Post. This is item number two, acceptance of the CDG, talent, and master grant, and the amount of $50,000 from the Raleigh Area Development Authority, through the resolution number 526, ladies grant agreement.
You sure you want me to talk one more time?
Not really, if it'll help us get through, yes, sir.
Well, this is the acceptance of the grant offered by the Department of Commerce, which was applied for by the Raleigh Area Development Authority, RADA. Mr. Wallace Green has met with you on several occasions tonight. Mr. Stanley King, who will be the project manager on this particular planning grant, is here. If you have any questions in your packet, you have a resolution. This is a standard resolution that these grants are accepted by the Department of Commerce. And if you have any specific questions, I would address them to Mr. King. If not, it's pretty straightforward as far as you want to accept the grant, and you pass the resolution.
Any questions, Mr. Emmerich?
Yeah, I see where it says that the town has already been awarded a claim. The town has already been given a claim.
If you accept it.
Well, the thing is, I'm having a problem again, is back in February, United States County, the town said that, you know, we had about seven big documents, about seven page document, and it was urgent that we acted on that in February, because it was only a 30, it had a 30-day window. And reading the town council passed that, voted to pass that, and is that still part of this development plan, or is this something separate?
I believe it's one in the same. There were two grants that the council approved at about the same time.
See, that's why I'm asking, because this is really... See, that's what I'm asking because this is really not, I don't think, well, I know it's not in the interest of the citizens in my area because as you read the, as you read the document that the town council signed on the 5th of February at the council meeting, it states that, you know, all of the money and whatever that was received would go to the downtown development corporation and they would establish some type of committee and they would loan the money to the central business district downtown.
I think you have the grants confused. That is the other grant that the council proposed. We did not receive that.
But see, the thing of it is, when Mr. Green came and met with us, the last time he met, he had changed it a little bit. He said it was all the same. He said he just had received the grant and all he had to do was change something, the wording of it, and they would get it. And the thing of it is, it laid out all the particulars of how the money would be received. That grant would be received. You say that, you give an honorable mention somewhere along the line about Belmont or something, get one. But as we go, as we look back over the years, when you hire for a grant or whatever, you particularly say where it's going and what it's going for. And this says that it's going for downtown central district.
This grant does not go to downtown.
Well, then I would like to have privilege seeing a document saying where it's going, you know, a written document saying where it's going.
Is a planning document to be used in East Smithfield?
See, that's what you're saying. That was, see, this is the second time. See, we had the same problem before and someone else got the grant, whatever you said there. All I'm asking is that if it's supposed to go to East Smithfield or Belmont or wherever it's supposed to go, why don't we have a document saying that this is where it's going?
If I can try and clarify, it seems like this came up last week or last month also. First, this radical grant has always been for East Smithfield. It's $50,000. That was presented back in November of 2012. No one has ever said at any time, anywhere, any document or any meeting that it's for downtown Smithfield. There was another grant submitted in February of 2012 that we did not receive. That was a planning grant that would have benefit or a loan, a revolving loan fund that would have been used in downtown Smithfield. Had nothing to do with East Smithfield. Those two, they're completely separate grants, have never been tied together, have never been related. You were given the entire packet with the entire grant information, a description and a memo at the, I believe it was November timeframe of 2012 about the RADA grant. I've got that document for you. We pulled it a few weeks after the last meeting. It's still in the clerk's office. It's there completely, describes every element of the RADA grant and it's complete. That's what this is. There was a, we have not accepted the grant yet. That's what tonight's meeting is about. It was awarded about 30 days ago, give or take, well, probably six weeks ago now, you know, sometime about a month and a half ago. And so really, those two grants are separate and have been separate from the meeting.
Well, all I'm saying, if the grant is supposed to go for Belmont, wherever it's supposed to go, it need to have documents saying that where it's going. When we, when we voted, this council voted in February for Mr. Green to have this, to do this, he met St. Peter's Church over there, down here about four times, and all of it was the same thing, we would do this. Okay, the problem I have with it is that you're telling us that it's going to Belmont or wherever, but then you don't show no paperwork of where it says. Only paperwork that I see, that I've been privileged to, because I came to you when it first came up and Mr. Green came to this, and I came to your office and you got so belligerent, you wouldn't even talk to me. I got up and left. I got up and left your house. I had to go get another councilman to come go over to the meeting that night to find out what was going on. Now, here we are, you're still telling me that we got a, we're going to get it. All I'm asking is if you got a grant and the grant's supposed to go to Belmont, Santa Rosa, put a document out there saying it's going to. But if it's not going, just tell them where it's going. That's all it is. We don't need, we don't, all we need.
We've done that. Clearly, you don't, clearly.
You may have done it, but I have not seen it. You may have done it, but I have not seen it. All I'm asking is to see it.
All I can do is provide the document to you. I can't make you read it.
No, you can't.
And I have the document. I have a map that describes this area. If you want to come tomorrow, I'd be more than happy to go through.
No, I need it public, I need it public where everybody can see it.
Now, let me, this, this grant is not for the community. It never has been for the community. This grant is to fund Mr. Green's writing of grants for the community.
For the, right, for the East Smithfield area, which is defined, it is indicated in the grant, there's even a map on it, so it's all.
But it's not, there's not $50,000 that's going to be taken and spent on the community. This is strictly to allow Mr. Green and his staff to apply for grants to help the area. And when I went to that first meeting, I'm not sure Mr. Green forbade himself really well, but I brought that up at that meeting, that this was a grant to allow them to apply for grants to help the area. And that's what this is. It's not, I don't think there's anything hidden. I think it is strictly putting him in a position to start looking at the area to apply for grants. That's what it is. None of this $50,000 will be spent in that area over there. It is strictly to pay for his staff and his office to apply for grants that the town deems appropriate or Mr. Green feels are available. Am I right, Paul? Yeah, that's my understanding, you know, I'm not sure.
Well, somebody else had more privilege, had privilege to Mr. Green and how he was, he came into this because I would not. And the only thing I'm asking now is that if this is what it is, all we need, all I need is a statement, a statement, statement, this is what it's for, what it's for, or a statement that shows everywhere the town has actually tried to get money, they have stated so. Now, all of a sudden, you know, you tell us that we're going to get, that it's going to do all these things, but look over there now. The last time we were told something like that, who got the green? Flannan's. And what did the people over there get? A loan. And what did they do? Hide somebody in women to suppose the man administered. So all I'm asking is for fairness. All I'm asking is that, okay, if this is the case, say so. Put it out saying, hey, there's going to be a, this man is writing grants and put it in writing that the grants will go for Belmont and if they're not going for Belmont, wherever they're going, just say where they're going. That's all I'm asking.
With all due respect, Mr. Williams, that was in the agenda packet for the November meeting when we allowed to apply or allowed to Mr. Green. We allowed ourselves to apply for this grant on behalf of Mr. Green. The map outlining the area, it's all in the packet for November. Mr. Harris, could we make a motion that incorporated one, Mr. Williams, if we would be done?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept this grant in the amount of $50,000 and authorize RADA to prepare the necessary paperwork in finalizing this resolution, this grant and approve this resolution, also including stating, that is specifically, for the East Smithfield community.
Call the question. Motion second. Call the question, all those in paper I.
Aye.
Item three, consideration of approval of budget amendment that will transfer an overreach revenue account to expenditure line item for park repairs. Johnson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council, come before you again this year as we have past several years. We have a revenue account line item, budget. In that line, that revenue line item, funds we receive from field rentals for tournaments, admission fees for certain tournaments that we have, somebody else is hosting them, our concession contracts and things such as that goes into that revenue line item. For the past several years, any amounts over what is projected, which is, we normally keep it at $10,000, we ask for that money to go back into the park for things that have happened during the year, the wear and tear, because there's a lot of traffic and a lot of use out there. And this year is no different. I think we've actually made a little more money, done a few more events. So what I'm asking for is to use an overage of $10,500 in that line item for mainly some major fence repair that needs to be done at the, around the soccer field at the community park. And then there's also a little retaining pond at the back of the park. Originally, there was a split rail fence there. It's been kicked down and thrown in the little pond and everything else. And we feel like we need to put something there, a barrier. There's so many children that walk with families back on the backside of the park that we'd like to put a chain link fence there to, for safety purposes. So the majority of that money would go for some major fence repairs and then the remainder of that would go for several other things inside the park.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson, this? Do we have a motion that we consider this budget amendment?
Second.
Motion second, if they write.
Aye.
Item four, consideration of approval to amend town's travel policy approval resolution 526.
Mayor, you have the revised travel reimbursement policy. If you're told, the council approved the first revision back in 2012, sometime in January, February of 2012. And this is just making very few changes. Tried to indicate those by strike through, what was being removed, by underlining town size, what was being added. You'll see, it looks like starting on page 257, the paragraph indicated with a D above mirrors. You'll see the ramming down, the road atlas language is basically, the maps are similar. That's typically what the user of this policy attached to expense form. That's just what most people use, just easier reference point to get the mileage if there's mileage. That's one change. Moving down to the bottom of 257, upon prior, upon prior written approval, first after the A there, really just requiring approval before a travel takes place. We'll see some minor changes there under the meal section. And really, the primary thrust of this change is there at the bottom of 257, the top of 258. It's really going on the meal reimbursement instead of the actual cost to go with the per diem, which basically we've been using since middle of last year and it's worked great for us. It saved us money and it's just a better policy to use instead of the actual reimbursement for meals at whatever expense they pay. There's a limit there. There's rules about if you don't stay overnight, this will apply in terms of reimbursement, things affordable. And also, if you don't stay overnight, or sorry, if a meal's included as part of your conference, you don't get reimbursed for that one either. So it's a fairly small tweak to the revision to the travel policy that was approved beginning of last year. It's a good change. I think it will net us additional savings and it really just clarifies kind of practices we've been following, which again, I think experience has shown is cheaper than what policies did.
Any questions of the manager on this resolution change? Travel policy? Do we approve it? Motion second, we approve it, all those in paper I. Post. Item five, consideration approval resolution 528, joint efforts to reduce the cost of town visits and the town itself.
Mayor, as you can see from the, from the action form, this is really, it's a resolution that resulted from many meetings started really by the mayor's meetings with John Johnson, you can fill us in on that, going back last year, finding out ways to share costs and resources so that all towns that want to be involved with this can actually save some costs. And really, this has resulted in a more focused effort on our electrical systems and services. It looks like there's a possibility and again, some things sound, sound great and don't end up benefiting as much as we like them to. This, you know, may end up that way. But we've had several meetings and I know the mayor's felt strongly about trying to have a joint effort to, one, try and do some things together where feasible. We've met with Electric Cities and some of their advisors on two occasions. They have some experience with towns that have separate electoral departments that have actually joined together to share administrative costs and other software and other costs that have helped them a good bit. And they have other ones that are more like this in a partnership issue, although not many, and they've, they've agreed to help us as much as possible. Just one aspect of the resolution. The greater aspect of the resolution is really just to acknowledge these three towns that, you know, we understand that our electrical rates are higher than the neighboring provider, basically Duke Energy at this point. And there's a reason for that. It doesn't want to change much, but there is a reason for that and that we're cognizant of that rate differential and we're going to do everything we can to try and adjust that and get closer to that, to that rate to be more competitive with new people and for our resident customers. Can we do that in one fell swoop? No, we cannot. But we wanted the public to know that we're mindful of it and that we're doing everything we can, including keeping a close eye on the renegotiation of our long-term debt with Electric Cities to see if we can either get some help with that or get that paid down or even if there's a buyout of some sort that would benefit all of our managers. So you've got really two aspects. The general, keeping an eye on the rates, basically the long-term debt in mind. And two, working together with our local electric providers to try and see what's going to happen in that space and that effort. So really, it's just a resolution to start the discussion to move forward where possible.
This is something the mayor's group has felt very strongly about, trying to pull our resources together to let both Electric Cities as well as the, you know, kind of Eastern Power Agency aware that our community is interested in keeping our rates low, competitive with due progress and that we want to keep a watchful eye on the debt as well as how we're operating. So this is, like the manager said, is where we cure all of this and again, resolution. Each cap for Selma and Benson is doing the same resolution so that we can show uniform approval.
Sounds good. I believe we approve the resolution.
Motion second, if they write.
Aye.
Post. Under the mayor's report, just you'll see that we are, June 15th, we're claiming domestic violence proclamation, 100 day. That's something we want to continue to support. We do have other items under the mayor's report that we'll be highlighting later, but that was the biggest one we want to bring attention to. We just talked about, the mayors are continuing to work together on expenditures and ways out there to work together to save costs as well as to be a watchful eye on a lot of these expenses that we have. There'll be some more topics coming out. We mentioned in the budget meeting about highly 70 quarter, that this board voted for our representative Chris Johnson to be our liaison for. That's going to be a big service force and Chris will keep this board informed on that if you would, because it's a very important decision. So that's all I have under the mayor's report. Council members comment? Any comments, Council members?
Yes, I am. At 7:16, there's a house over there. It did have a cell sign, cell sign that's taken down. The grass and the leaves is growing up around it. There's a daycare next to it, right next door to it. They've seen snakes and rodents and they, they think they're cute.
Mr. Emmerich, can you get Brad on that, please?
He's already aware of it. He's already sent the notice out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams, you said Brad is working with that now.
I have something, Mayor. Just briefly with the town manager, if you could, and we can take this to next month, share with us the report from police chief in reference to the business. share with us the, uh, report from police chief in reference to the business out there at Industrial Park Drive, in and in.
Just an update?
Yes, sir. Uh, he said he had that report, he can just take that, share it with us next month, please.
Mayor, just want to, again, publicly, uh, thank Paul and all the staff for, for getting the budget information as requested, uh, for tonight's meeting. Thought it was a, a fine job, and just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Kevin, you have a brief report?
Yes, sir, uh, extremely, extremely brief. Uh, we've been kind of busy on the budget, it's the most of the areas. Um, as painful as it may be for Mr. Endler, I'd like to, I wasn't able to attend the Smithfield crossings meeting this afternoon. Paul, is there an update you can give the council just real quickly? I know you're probably getting hoarse at this point.
The contractor will, uh, start paving on Street Eight, which is the loop drive, uh, that, uh, in there on Monday. Uh, he also started today laying the seventy-two inch pipe, the remainder of it, uh, down Old Gold's Road Road. That will be finished in short order. We still have some issues of moving over and getting on Industrial Park Drive. Century Link came and did all the relocation works, told us it was good to go. We went out there and the first bucket that, uh, Paco dug up, he dug up five fiber optic lines that were not supposed to be there. So, um, we're in the process of trying to resolve that. That was the bulk of our discussion in our meeting today. The contractor will probably be moving off and getting on Industrial Park Drive next, and we've advised him on tax free August, he's got to be off Industrial Park Drive, so he's got his task cut out for him. That's kind of brief of what we want to.
That's fine. So, Paul, when do you think you're going to get the resolution, uh, from Century Link?
That's, that's a good question. Uh, it was, uh, done months ago, and we've been waiting for them, and then they came and relocated, and they relocated to boxes, but they did not relocate the fiber optic lines. Now, don't ask me what, and we had to pay them in advance in the whole nine yards. We sent the checks to Kansas City, Missouri, and the whole nine, everything, but it just, they, when the crew got out there and they did the work, they didn't relocate the lines. So we're still continuing with them. We're, we're going to have the, them come and mark the lines again this Friday, and we're going to actually survey the lines then. We're going to do hand digs, we're going to go down and find physically where the lines are in the ground, and we're going to survey them in and, and only move the minimum that we've got to move to get the curb and gutter and the storm drainage. It's, it's just pulling us up.
Are they, are they the only ones holding us up now?
The gas company's still a little bit slow on Old Gold's Road Road, but they're, they're moving. But other than that, we've got all the others pretty well tagged in. Relocation works a minute.
Okay.
Mayor, just following up on the Crosses project, on the, uh, the financing, um, I reported here last week that we have sent in information early in the week to the LGC, looking for their okay. And, uh, so basically, we're just waiting for the LGC, um, the board to actually meet and approve that extension, which I don't think is going to be a problem. Their staff supports it, they're making favorable recommendation that it be extended. As you recall, this is the debt that basically was a short term debt that was going to be closed out with the existing long term findings we have in place, but we can't do that until the project's finished, so just moving that from, um, you know, May, June timeframe to a, sometime before December of this year. And, um, hopefully, the project done by that, by that time, we'll be able to, uh, make that transition then, but, um, so we're just waiting for that meeting and, um, and make the, of course. Separate from that, Mayor, um, I know we talked before the meeting at our budget meeting, you know, about the insurance, primary health insurance, and also the secondary health insurance quotes. Um, we do need to have a meeting to actually formally approve the primary health insurance quote, and, uh, and really just to follow up, and most of those in the secondary health insurance will actually just be the rules. We've good, we've got good returns on the secondary health insurance. Um, so those are, a few changes here and there, but nothing major, so we feel good about those. Those are the employee paid quotes, and then, but we do need to go ahead and formally accept the, um, the bid, the proposal, um, from the FCC that will, and is my recommendation, uh, to, to make that through. So Mayor, I don't know if, if there's a time when you want to do it, if we can make a proper meeting, but the sooner the better, um, then we can do that, so we can afford it. I mean, it really should be, you know, that's just one detailed question about the covers, I think it should be a very short, uh, procedure.
Is there a time the council sees fit, or is it about part of the, of the schedule that's, you know, about toward the eighteen, eighteen was too late?
Yeah, we, we need to schedule our, uh, we're trying to do our enrollment meeting, and we can schedule that, but just timing wise, I think that would be right about the same time, you know, I'm saying.
Tuesday, Wednesday night next week, very brief. Tuesday night, maybe about the meeting. So, is that fit with the rest I was getting? Tuesday night, say, six thirty, six, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Seven thirty. Make sure you send that by before.
Say six thirty.
Six thirty.
Do we need to adjourn this meeting?
Most sure. You could, you could, um, reset it to last time. That'll do it, and you have the written reports, um, in your packet, and, uh, the same stuff, so that's all I have.
I need a motion that we go to the closed session very, very briefly, discuss personnel matters pursuant to N C G S one forty-three, three eighteen eleven.
I move we do so on the condition that it is very brief.
Thank you.
It will wait, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.